Alright, page four is the opinion. Unqualified opinion, complying with all the general accepted accounting principles. It says there, "Your statement's not ours when we take a sampling of transactions." We don't look at every single transaction. We'd be here for days and days, months and years. Flipping over to page sixteen and seventeen, rolling up the school in totality. You're in a deficit net position of just over fifteen million dollars. But if you look, your net pension obligation and your OPEB obligation are roughly sixteen million. So you wash that off the books. You look at, um, you actually had an increase of about three million dollars from the year before. And without getting into all the gory, gory details, kind of looking at page twenty-one, you see that number on the bottom of the page here. You actually, your pension and OPEB actually decreased one point six million dollars based on the actuaries this year. So that's a good sign. When you take out all the other stuff, you had a gain of about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The big player of that is the general fund. And if you look at page sixty-four, you can see you had a final budget of about seven hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase. You came in just under seven hundred and ninety thousand, so your budget looked really well. That accounts for it. You know, your original budget, you were projecting a loss, but as all the ESSR money and all the different funding sources came through, that kind of helped you out. Plus, your finances are getting better in the first place, so that's good to see. We did a single audit this year. That was on page eighty-two. We had to test all that ESSR money that was coming through and the nutrition cluster. And I'm happy to say, no findings there. No findings last year. Meetings are nice and short, and we're done. That's the fast pass version. Now, does anybody want to talk about anything more than that?
Overall, we're looking in good shape.
Yes. You have made strides from a few years ago where things were not very pretty to now things are starting to look pretty. You're moving in the right direction. You got the finances in line. You know what you're doing. Now, now you're going into the next phase of, you've kind of cleaned up the past. You're on good footing. Now is to keep that going forward. A lot of times what I'll see is you get here, okay, things are looking good, and then places will start backsliding. You don't want to get that backsliding. You always want to kind of keep looking forward. I kind of look at what's really helped you this year and the year before is COVID's been hard on you. A lot of extra expenses, but you're getting a lot of money. This ESSR money coming through is helping out.
That was going to be where an action was. Once that washes up, what do you?
So, and that's the double-edged sword with some of this stuff. It honestly is. So if I look at your ESSR money, you know, that was when we roll it all up, that's about one point five million dollars this past year. And when I say it's a double-edged sword is not all of it was going for operations. A lot of it was going, hey, we needed to do this. We needed to get this fixed, and we needed to do that. So it wasn't in the budget, but it wasn't spread frivolously. You know, it was, we needed to get this fixed. We needed to get that fixed. So was able to get some of that stuff done with that money. There's going to be a little bit more rounds of that coming through for the next year, but as time comes down, now you're going to have to go back to the sinking fund and that extra pot isn't going to be there for you. And that's what you got to watch out for going forward. And that's where Amy could probably give you a better list of, here's what we actually spent all that different money on. And a lot of it was, okay, we're spending it here, or we can spend it here. And it was just kind of, okay, which buckets work the best because of, you're looking at, like Downstate, they were using a lot of that on new HVAC systems and different things like that. And they're actually, Downstate, they said, if you don't have it in the hopper, you're looking at three years to get it in Downstate. They're that far behind in looking stuff up. So it's, using that money on the right side.
Everybody blurs it PJ.
We've also spent that ESSR money on some one-time expenditures. We've bought two or three buses with that and some other things. So, and as we've rolled, this has been a couple of years we've been rolling along. Good news is, is there's some other state funding that is now really picking up. It's kind of filling in the gap at risk. We've equally funded thirty-one AA for mental health, ninety-seven for security, and some things like that. So it's nice that we have some other sources coming in to soften that. But it has always been part of that conversation as we look out is to, when we have retirements and resignations, to be able to fill those within, particularly at the teaching level. A lot of that goes back to building configuration too. So that's why that's always been a topic that we continue to talk about is because it does impact our budget long-term.
And the other thing is, if you look when I got this aim a while ago, is your regular millage and foundation paid for education and facilities. Now, the property taxes and the foundation money pay for education, but it's not paying for the facilities anymore. So you're having to figure out how to pay for these facilities going forward. That's becoming a bigger and bigger cost over time. And that's where the sinking fund and bonds and what can you do come into play and help out. So it's one of those things, you've gotten out of, you got out of the hole. Now it's make sure you don't slide back because it's like, oh, now we can do this, and let's do that, and let's bring this on, and let's bring that on. And pretty soon you brought in more than what you can support. Making sure you're following that trend towards the biggest.
That's actually kind of on the line, the line of my question, and it may not make sense. But, so in your experience, when, when districts get to financial health, right? What are, what are some of the trends that you see that leads them back to a healthy status quickest?
Back, oh, backslide? Part of it is, okay, we've had to make cuts, so let's put the cuts back that we had before. You know, we had to eliminate, and I'm just totally shooting from the end. We had to close buildings, lay off teachers, get rid of programs. Oh, we're good. Let's bring that all back. But they can't afford bringing it all back, and they don't see it. They say, oh, we have it, but you just go forward with it. One of the things I always say, looking at things, is, okay, and we'll just make life simple. If you get a million dollars, do you want to do a million-dollar project one time and that's it? Or do you want to spread that out? Let's do a hundred thousand dollars for ten years? You know, do we want to do fifty thousand dollars for twenty years? It's looking at that and not saying, oh, let's bring this back for a million dollars. And then in year two, you're like, ooh, how are we going to fund that going forward? Either you got to cut it, or you start going backwards. So that's kind of what I see. Or, you know, not as concerned with the budget, you know? Not focusing on the budget, you know? How are the finances going? Are we staying where we need to do? Or it's, we put so many things on hold, let's start bringing them back in without looking at what the ramifications of that are. Not looking at the planning of, hey, we have to do the HVAC system. That's going to be half a million dollars. We need to be putting a hundred thousand dollars away for five years to do that. Or the flip side, we got to get a bond to pay for that to go forward. So that's kind of the downfalls of, once you get here of, hey, okay, we can bring this all and do all of this, but can you just keep that going forward?
Right, so, I mean, district, like, they look like they're flush.
They look like they're flush, but are they?
But are they really?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's where our four-year academic budget comes in to, you know, to be really helpful is because, and we're working with that all the time, is when we're making a decision, how does this impact it for future years? So as long as we continue to use that, I think, to help make, you know, decisions, then, yeah. If they're not, you know, for non-grant fund type stuff.
And enrollment terms, you know? Are you trending up? Are you trending down? Are you getting bubbles? You know, kind of looking at, projecting that out because that's the biggest funder is your foundation, how many kids? Foundation, here's the money you're getting. You know, are you on a downhill slide? So do we want to put something in place that's going to cost us more, but we don't have enough kids to support that anymore for lack of a better term? And looking at those things. So it's, you know, biggest thing is being aware of it is always helpful.
I don't see any public comment regarding the audit presentation, so will we wrap up? What number comments?
I'm good.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. You didn't have a few minutes in between.
Make a motion to adjourn at eighteen twenty-three.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. No, you're just kidding.
Do you need a second? I'll second.
I already seconded.
Oh, hold on one minute.
Hi.
Hi. Need a motion or a vote for a.
Yeah, maybe end up probably at Christmas.
What? You don't have to make a motion.
I don't know, it's called the secretary or something.
Spend that way for years, Mike.
Are we good?
Yes.
December.
You're changing today, you're like, you can pull it down any time.
Dated for today. The next afternoon, we need to change that date for next Monday.
Got it.
Any questions though?
No, okay.
We've been to student presentations, Gilbert Elementary.
Hi, everybody. October Students of the Month from Gilbert Elementary. I am proud to announce we have Skylar Baraki, Scarlett Howard, Acadia Weeby, Everett Eden, Braylon Weeby, Harper Benz, Jace Kuchar, Amber Chapman, Jack Grange, Natalie Crewid, Jacob Rolfe, and Sophia Usher. Congratulations to our October Students of the Month.
KI Sawyer.
The October Students of the Month at KI Sawyer include Levi Stern, Jason Stanshite, Michael McConnell, Thomas Katona, Isla Campbell, Janelle Virch, Cadence Ketcherson, Emery Basner, Liliana Knudsen, Henry Hanman, Kalen Geezy, Jaden Stapleton, and Bella Compton. Well done.
To my Students of the Month, if I could add my sixth, seventh, eighth grade representative, Sophia Holt, Antonio Magdaleno, and McKenna Wolf. Please join me up here. Okay, two out of three is not bad. Sophia is the sixth grade Student of the Month. She's not here today. Sophia is the daughter of passionate Jeffrey Holtz, and she has a sister, Isabella. She tells us that she enjoys being outside and going on walks. She's part of our robotics club. Sophia's favorite class is math. Some days she hopes to become an engineer and design robots. Sophia says that her secret skill is that she's good at singing. Teacher tells us that she is an excellent student both inside and outside of the classroom. She's a great addition to our middle school. She works hard in class and always asks if she can help out with any classroom duties. Watching her interact with friends will melt your heart. She's a hardworking member of the GMS Robo Towners Robotics Team. Broke it to my left, Mr. Antonio Magdaleno. He's the son of Chris Ruse and Art Magdaleno Jr., siblings Manny and Juliana. Is that how you pronounce it? Okay, because I'm gonna have her pretty soon. I gotta make sure I got it right. He says that he likes to hang with friends, explore the outdoors, and listen to music. He enjoys boxing. You been doing that with a trainer or just kinda learning on your own? A little bit of both? He says his favorite class is ELA because Mr. White is a good teacher. Teachers report that Antonio always has a positive attitude. He always has a smile on his face and a kind word to offer to his teachers and to his peers. Antonio is also, is always willing to help anyone who needs it. He's open and friendly and kind. He's conscientious and hardworking. He has a great attitude and is always prepared and participates regularly in class. And he said that his superpower is making friends. Right? You like making friends? Seems like you're a pretty popular guy. Seems like everybody likes you. So congratulations, Antonio. Also fun with me is McKenna Wolf. McKenna is the daughter of Aaron and Louis Wolf. She enjoys playing softball, reading, coloring, and hiking. All right, so we got a softball team member a year from now, right? She is part of, also part of our robotics team, the middle school quiz bowl team, and Take the Hike Club. Teachers describe McKenna as an amazing, kind-hearted individual. Her personality and work ethic are admirable. In her daily interactions with classmates, she's always positive and welcoming. She loves to read, and her list of books to read continues to grow. She's quiet, confident, hardworking, and pleasant to be around. She's a self-motivated student who takes pride with what she always does. Takes pride in always doing her best work. Sorry about that. She is always positive and quietly sets a good example for other students on a daily basis. So congratulations for our middle school Students of the Month. Here is your certificate. Tomorrow I will have your goodies. I got a gift card to Subway from the GEA, from administration. And the teachers here, we have a fifteen dollar gift certificate for Model Town Hall Mark, and of course, from the kitchen staff, either milk and cookies or an ice cream bar. So congratulations, guys. I'll have those free tomorrow in the office with Miss Nancy. Congratulations, guys. Okay, so a few of my high school Students of the Month. I saw Garrett come on up. Did Noah come in and join us? I didn't see Noah come in. Kaylee Harnick's on the radio with me tonight, and I saw Miss Elena. So I want you guys to come on up. Me to my left, Garrett Nye. Garrett is the son of Kevin Nye and Jamie and Rob. Vindazan? I've never asked.
Vindazandi.
Vindazandi. I should've asked that before we got here, Garrett. He has siblings Zach, Ethan, and Tegan. He enjoys playing on his tablet, Nintendo Switch. Nintendo Switch, computer, or Xbox. He also enjoys spending time with his family and especially his dog, Rio.
Yep.
We're gonna have to talk about this dog. I like dogs. This year Garrett has helped on our football team. As a water boy, he plans on doing it again this winter for basketball. His favorite subject is gym. He gets to learn new sports and play and hang out with his friends. He likes to build things and games in real life. He hopes to be a gamer someday or maybe work with animals, especially dogs, because he loves dogs. Staff reports that every morning, we are fortunate enough to start today with a friendly high five and a hello from Garrett. His positivity is contagious. He comes in every day with a smile and asks if I need help in setting up PE equipment. So your gym teacher, you're always looking to help in the morning. Garrett's come a long way. He took a risk at the beginning of the year when he chose to challenge himself, taking harder academic classes, and he's absolutely risen to the challenge. He's always friendly and kind to those around him. He loves to follow the rules and make his teachers happy. Almost every day, right, Garrett? You've come a long way, young man. I'm so proud of you. Noah Poyer is not able to join us tonight. Noah is the daughter of Nate and Kim Poyer. She has a sister, Kylie. She enjoys traveling, playing tennis, and reading. She is part of our softball and tennis teams. Last year I would've ordered her most improved on the softball team. She says her favorite class is American History with Mr. Treckley. One of her interests includes baking bread. Teachers tell us that Noah is a focused student who's willing and willing to help others whenever it's needed. She works hard, creates colorful notes, and is always kind. She has three standard portals. This is coming from a teacher, so she must be really communicating with these teachers. They reshare that she loves to bake, that she's kind, considerate, quiet, and competent. So congratulations. I think Kayla Harnick didn't show up tonight because she didn't show me, share any of her personal information, but she's a Harnick, and I've had Harnicks in my school for a long time, so I know lots about her. She's the daughter of Lisa and Ryan Harnick. Brother's Jake, Josh, and James. I won't hold that against her. I love them too. She has received many compliments for her efforts in her peer-to-peer program, so I'm gonna go on a limb and say that she really enjoys helping other students. Kylie is hardworking and cares about doing things the right way. She does a great job of asking questions to make sure she understands material to the best of her ability. She has outstanding peers. She works diligently to help her peer be successful by being a kind friend and a helpful supporter to keep them on track with notes and helping understand instructions. She also helps them get to lunch and settle in before having her own lunch. To my right, Miss Elena Saip, our senior 12th grade Student of the Month, sponsored by the Up North Lodge, the administrators, GEA Kitchen Crew. What do I say, Elena? Last year you stood up here and you told me you were surprised to be Student of the Month. Are you surprised to be a Student of the Month this year?
A little bit, but not as much as last year.
Not as much as last year?
And the year before that.
Well, I think your wording was last year. You don't know why they ever picked you, but I'll tell you why. They notice all the little, small things, and you are absolutely dominating your senior year. Elena is the daughter of Mary and George Saip. She has siblings Krista, Brittany, and Eden. She lists one of her hobbies as reading and tells us that recently she's kinda got back into it, because she's remembering how much she enjoys it. She has been recently introduced to hunting with one of her friends and her dad, or kinda teaches some of the basics. What are you hunting for?
Deer.
Deer? If you get any good tips, help me out. She's a member of our drama department. This year she has a larger birthday than she has in the past, so she's probably pretty excited about that. Favorite class is CAD. They just got done designing their go-karts, and she's pretty proud of the fact that her group in CAD is all ladies. Elena is still kinda figuring out her future. She's applied to some colleges, including NMU. Right now she's thinking that's where she might end up and pursue a degree in criminal justice. Teachers describe her as a focused worker, always on task, always completing work on time to the best of her ability. She is wonderful and thoughtful, willing to work with others to find a solution. That I made my point about last year's Students of the Month thing, so trust me, we know this. So congratulations. Thank you for everything you do. Congratulations to our Students of the Month.
So we have public comment listed on there, but what was corrected via our policy is that if it's not public comment regarding an action item on the agenda, that we reserve that public comment towards, at the end. So we'll get through the business as quick as possible, and I still have the public comment here. So we'll move on to financial report, presentation of claims.
Okay, we're gonna begin on page fourteen, and then that runs through page twenty-four. So I ask that the board approve the October accounts payable in the amount of eight hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I will make the motion to approve the financial report that presented. A second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None heard. Financial report?
No additional financial report other than what you heard earlier for the audit presentation.
Okay. So then I'll move on to, I'll make the motion that we accept the 2021-22 audit report that was presented in that meeting just previous to this one. Go ahead. Do you want to be a role columnist?
No.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Moving to information, strategic plan update.
Strategic plan. I scheduled a town hall meeting that sent out notices last week, November thirtieth, next Wednesday. We'll have a meeting here in the library, discuss building and site goals, get information gathering, first of a few, looking for public input as we move forward. You know, some of the conversations, discussions in the audit, we're looking at, you know, where finance, financial, the district sits financially. And now becomes that next step of where are things sitting. We do have a couple, we have a project scheduled for bids for this one, utilizing some of those funds, but we've got some updates that we need to take a look at throughout the district and all of our buildings, and then take a look at where are our needs, where do we sit? Our district dynamics have changed. What does that look like? I think it's important that we have an opportunity for some input from the community in that regard, what is our next step? Light grades, there's been a conversation that's been on the table since some of the notes that I dug up from 2014. So we're well within almost a decade of having a conversation in this district of moving light grades together. I think it's the right move for this district.
Could you speak up a little?
Those would be some of the, absolutely, those would be some of the conversations that would take place at this, at this opportunity. So great session, great opportunity for discussion.
Randy, what time is that meeting?
Six o'clock.
So we move into the discipline update.
Yeah, so one of the conversations that I had was we had set up a meeting with our support, Power School Support. That's a student information system that we utilize. Power School does have opportunities and options for log entries. We use those, but it's kind of a different movement than what we've had. Currently, right now, our staff utilizes a paper format that gets turned over to admin. Admin works through that, and then they input that into Power School, looking at some training for our staff to utilize Power Teacher where they can do all that stuff electronically. This communication can be done, a lot less movement of paperwork. But it's gonna take a little bit of time. Those are the pieces that we're still working on. So that training is taking place. We're looking at piloting with a specific grade level, still working on setting that up, but that'll be the plan here moving forward this next, throughout this next month of eliminating that paper piece and utilizing electronic stuff so that we can communicate, run reports, pulling out of Power School rather than the double-dat entry. Previously, what was happening was the information was being loaded into Power School and also to Swiss, looking at just using the one tool, Power School of the single entry, and all of our log entry and information can be shared via Power School.
NWEA scores for Noel High School?
In your package you have some of the information in regards to the fall test cycle that we had, grade six, seven, and eight. The top is reading. The middle part is our, obviously, language usage, and then the bottom is NWEA math. The numbers speak for themselves. It's a situation where it's part of our conversation in regards to grade level meetings and looking at curriculum. Now, NWEA will allow us to dive into, into the scores, looking for comparisons that will help us with any adjustments in regards to curriculum, what we're teaching, are we hitting, are we hitting it effectively, efficiently? So those will be pieces that our teachers will be able to utilize moving forward. Not sure, Mr. Fluger, if you have anything else to add in regards to the scores that were shared?
No, I'm sure of the scores there from this fall. This will be a report that we create every time we take those, three times a year, to compare to see how we're stacking up and creating some focal points. One particular point of emphasis this year, these are the big changes at the sixth grade level, what kind of impact they have as we compare test one to test two to test three. That should be hopefully a good indicator that what we're doing is right. It feels like it's right. We're seeing a lot of improvements, at least in sort of field, but you need something to back that up, so hopefully, as we continue to work on our sixth grade plan, we do that and we figure out how to make that happen and more and more grade levels going through.
Mr. Fluger?
Yes.
When is your next test so we can see improvements?
It'll be right at the end of January. I have set the dates at either end of January, first of February, somewhere in that range.
And then when would the scores be in?
Soon as we close the window, I can produce these. So usually, middle of February?
So February board meeting?
Possibly February board meeting, if not March for sure.
Will there be comparisons on that from this test, you know, having this one on there along with the next one?
Well, one, one, one quick eyeball test would be you make the exact same graph, and you compare how these numbers in the rows change. You know, so if the, if the bad numbers decrease and the good numbers increase, you know you're doing the right thing. That's one simple test. Two, the teachers are, will be provided, each of their students grade before and after. The graph for them, I assume, is really nice because it pairs bar graphs to say where they stack up and how much they've improved. The test creates a recommended growth goal for them, so you can see if they're growing at the same pace as other students around the country that tested at the same location last time, so.
But that's what will be presented to us in February?
This in the minimal, I get you, I'll, I'll have to meet with somebody to see what would be most beneficial for you guys. I'll start with this and a comparison to this, and if more is wanted, we'll come up with more.
Yep, more, that sounds good.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
So if you don't see an increase, what do you do then?
Go back to the building blocks and find some best practices that we're not currently doing. We're working on staff development and professional development to get better at what we're doing.
Because to me, this is one of the most important things we do.
I agree.
I messed up. I wanted to comment heavy gear here, and I don't know where I was. Are we allowed to go back? Where's the camera off?
I want to comment.
I just wanted other people to weigh in, but that's okay. My fault.
Department updates? Department updates, I apologize. Yes, sorry.
I wasn't sure if we had any.
Yes, the word, you were provided an update, model, model town or update, update in regards to Gilbert and KI Sawyer.
Mr. Fluger shared his electronically as well.
Yeah, I shared recently, actually, if I haven't seen it yet, I'd share an electronic version of our updates, a little discussion about our building trades class trip, which I did share on Facebook, Take Hike Club, which was shared on Facebook, some activity in Spanish classes, and coming to December, it's more of being that recently, was a robotics challenge in Kingsbury, a middle school kid. So as we get those, we're sharing on Facebook and putting on that board update, so you see digital and the pictures are right there, so it's nice and easy for you guys to look at. Take Hike Club also adds a link in case you want to see some of their journey.
I have a question. So a couple years ago, we would have the kids come in and do, show us something that they've done. Can we do that again?
Any kind of presentation you'd like, if we're going to do that?
I just think every, every month we should show why we're here and what we're doing. Mrs. Petrovich had all those gone for us, and I think it was great.
I'll add that to our conversation for next board meeting, or admin meeting, we'll come up with a plan.
Any other departments? Bus garage? Nope.
No. Food service, we've been working through our food service track, and they're returning to leave. Obviously, we've got a plan set up. We've got a head cook that's working there. It's been working very smoothly. We appreciate the work that they've done down there. I try to get down there a couple days a week, just hope I'm in, and the conversations have been very positive, working through, you know, obviously, that absence, but they've been able to communicate, stay on task, and things have been working very well in that regard.
And they're steaming broccoli. I love it.
Yeah, I've heard very good things about the food service and the offerings.
I think it might be good to hear from PJ on the transportation side for the cost of buses. This was a conversation, right? Would you mind? Can you, can you give some information on that, PJ? Just overall, just the cost of buses and the timelines and how things have changed or are changing. Those that you've been around for a while, you kinda know what our routine has been and so, and how this is going to impact us moving forward? And a bus replacement plan, so can you do that?
All right. I'm also a part of the UP bus bid committee. I'm one of the chairpeople for it. We just finished the bidding process through three major vendors. Average price of a bus is about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, up from about a hundred and nine last year was the average. Right now, we are told outright by all of the vendors, you can expect at least a year from the time in which you order before you're going to see your bus. It's not going to get any better. It's, it's going to get worse before it gets better. So with that in mind, we've been working on a replacement plan, and I'm, I'm going to request next month to potentially get up to two buses so that we can get a regular routine of two, one, 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 one. I, I built a whole bus replacement schedule that I'm, I'm proofing through right now, just to double check to make sure everything's right. But right now, this year, I'm requesting two buses so that we can keep the fleet functional. I'll, I'll keep it at that. But yes, with buses in general, it's, it's going to get harder and harder, not gonna lie. So when we look to purchase buses here for probably the next couple of years is what I'm told, we're not looking for next summer, we're looking for like the summer after the next summer. So we have to be very careful because we could end up being in a bad situation very quickly.
Is that priced for gasoline or propane?
Uh, that is priced for a diesel, which is actually the cheapest. Yes. Adding propane to a bus adds seven thousand, five hundred dollars to the price.
What about for gas?
Gas is like a...
Or do they?
Gas is, it varies from vendor to vendor. Some of them it gets more expensive, some of them it's like a five hundred dollar credit.
Well, and the gasoline buses that we have, what's the price for gallon of propane?
We are paying...
Eighty-nine.
Yep, a dollar eighty-nine.
One dollar eighty-nine.
And look at the price of diesel and gas.
It's, it's, that's, that's true. However, average propane bus is getting about four miles per gallon.
Holy cow.
Yes. A diesel bus, the new diesels with the right, paired with the right transmission can average seven to ten miles per gallon, depending on the route.
And as far as parts go...
So it's getting closer to...
It's getting closer and closer.
As far as parts go, what's cheaper in general?
Diesel.
So...
Uh, we, we just had to replace a propane tank on fifteen B, and after pricing it around at several vendors, prices varied anywhere from twenty-four thousand dollars for a tank down to thirteen thousand, thirty dollars for a tank, yes. So at twenty-four thousand dollars, that's, that's like twenty percent of the cost of the total bus.
I'm good with diesel. I love my diesel.
Propane has its advantages. Propane gives you better heat, no question about it. But there's some things that diesel is better at, so that's, that's a philosophical discussion me and Neil have on a weekly basis.
Can you also give an update on that? And that, we call it the lottery, but kinda that grant program?
Oh, yes. Sure. There was a, a clean bus lottery held at, by the EPA at the federal level. You could apply for either propane or electric buses. It was a lottery that they said was a random drawing, though every single bus in the state of Michigan that got drawn was an electric bus. We applied for propane buses. It really, truly varied. There's one district that got, got picked twelve times. I'm not entirely sure how that happened, but they're getting twelve electric buses at the low, low cost of a hundred, or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a bus. So there's, there's proponents for the electrical buses, but that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a bus. So like I said, they are not getting cheaper, not by a long shot. Yeah.
So the sinking fund dollars are not allowed to be used for buses, but bond issue dollars are. There are some places that they will ask for very, very small bond issues just to buy a bus, and they might go. So that's just, you know, something to be thinking about as we talk about building configuration and, you know, what that might look like is that how potentially could a bus replacement plan fit into a bond issue where you maybe go out regularly, like once every three years? Because you can usually, you can spend bond dollars over about three years. So if you said, well, we want to buy one a year, in today's dollars, let's just say it's a hundred and twenty-five, okay, the next three years, you know, we're gonna need three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So it's just a way of financing that we could maybe discuss other ways of financing rather than outright as with an installment purchase agreement. But of course, it's kinda just like financing a vehicle, then you're gonna be paying interest on that. So we've been at, PJ and I, we've been having these conversations. We were really hoping that the bus lottery was gonna come through. There's really no other grants, you know, out there. And for the past two-ish years, we've been using S or dollars to pay, you know, to pay for grants.
And don't we have some bonds that are gonna be taken care of?
No, I mean new bonds.
Right, but, but we have some that are going away, correct?
Um, yes.
I thought, one year, one date that comes to mind is 2024.
So, yeah, that doesn't, it's, but this is about, we need new money to go out, and so, but, but what, the financing with that is that, that was a piece of the 2016 bond that was passed, so the bond amount isn't gonna necessarily go down for taxpayers?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
But they're gonna drop off regarding...
That particular bond vote, right?
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, so it's just, it's kind of a complex, you know, situation, but it's another opportunity to say, okay, we have this challenge, how are we gonna solve it? Because it's, this, this landscape is changing with buses.
Yes, and one last thing is, is one thing that we do that nobody else does is we pay our drivers to pressure wash the buses on a weekly basis. Cannot stress to you how important that is, because buses don't die in the UP because of, because the engine or the transmission go. Not a chance. They, they go because the, the rails underneath the bus rust out, and then they can't pass inspection. Bus inspections are, are one of the most strictest inspections the state has for vehicles. So if, if the rails look too rusty, the inspector can say that bus is dead, and you, you can't argue, you can't appeal it, nothing. The inspector says it's dead, it's dead. That's the way it works.
School's got a lot of money. No, we don't, not really. Gotta pay bills.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Peter. So Mr. Ruse for the superintendent's report, if you wanna take district news, board update, correspondence?
Yep, I, I've got notes for, for each of those. Yep, there is no correspond, I don't have any correspondence. Yep, I, I've got notes for, for each of those, yep, there is no cor, I don't have any correspondence, um, but district news and update, um. We had middle school, high school, parent teacher conferences last week, um, below average numbers, um, we had them on the Monday night, December seventh. Typically, we do it Tuesday, Thursday, we moved that to Monday night, so we wouldn't interfere with, uh, election opportunities. And they were, you know, it was, it was busy, it was busy, um, but certainly. The numbers, um, you know, it becomes one of those conversations, what, what else can we do to bolster attendance and try to get some of the folks in? We appreciate the parents that came in and participated, that's awesome. Team staff really enjoy the opportunity to meet with, uh, with students' parents and have a chance to talk about their students. Uh, but we're always gonna look at, uh, an opportunity or ways to bolster, improve, uh, the attendance.
Can I, and, yeah, I've heard that virtual, some of the teachers.
Yep, we did have, Thursday was an opportunity for some virtual, we saw that there was an increase, um, in previous. Obviously, with COVID, we didn't have, um, face to face, so it was all virtual. And we saw an opportunity at that point to reach some of the folks that may not, um, come in. So we provided that opportunity and we're gonna take a look at where those numbers compared, you know, we had a Monday, it was in person, Thursday was a, a virtual option. Did we see an increase, neither, or where does that sit, so those will be some things that we'll take a look at moving forward, uh, with our, with our next. Parent teacher opportunities, elementary parent teacher conferences are, are coming up next week. Uh, they'll be on Tuesday, Thursday, November twenty-ninth and December first, uh, four to seven P M. Look forward to, or asking parents to look for notices from each of the buildings in regards to getting some of those appointments set up. And right now, we have four postings for para positions open, we had, obviously, in here we'll have two resignations. Um, we, we continue to see some movement, uh, just some different opportunities, one of them is probably, is going to be moving out of state. The other one had another job opportunity that was, uh, a, a chance, um, for them to pursue something a little bit different, so. We still have some postings that we're looking to fill and we have two teaching position postings that we still have, we have an ECSE position at, at Sawyer. Um, and we have a special ed full-time position posted also. Uh, one positive is that we've had some letters of interest from N M U students that are graduating this December. Looking forward to those opportunities to interview those students and get, get a chance to, to visit with them and meet with them. Hopefully, we have a chance to get those positions filled.
Is that, is that just for the sped position or the ECSE?
Um, the, the candidate was for the specialized position. Um, but I've got a lead on an ECSE, which I, I sent an email out today, hopefully I'll hear back. Soon from a colleague that, so their child is graduating and I think the lead has that, what I've heard is they have that endorsement, I just need to verify that. But I'll reach out, I'll reach out to them, um, with the hope that hopefully we can get something taken care of.
Hard position on the phone.
It is, you're absolutely right, absolutely right. So those are some of the issues and some of the things that we're, we're working through, um, in that regard.
Full business action, second reading of the NEOLA policies from the October. So I need a motion to consider changes in NEOLA policies as a second and final reading. We have our copies from October, we have.
Um, need a motion to accept the NEOLA policies.
All second. All in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Um, so I see a new business action, it's asked us.
My mistake.
So, do we need to do it again, or? Okay. No worries. Acceptance of the November eighth, twenty twenty-two election results, which are page twenty-nine, if you care to take a look.
I make a motion to accept the November eighth, twenty twenty-two election results.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Um, scheduling the superintendent's evaluation. So I give some discussion, do we just set a date, do we discuss it, so I think we should just discuss it and set a date that way. How far out do we have to go and how soon does it have to be?
Has to be done by June thirtieth.
You mean our quarterly one?
We're doing your quarterly ones already, so, um, I guess you didn't miss anything?
So we just, we did, um, eval two months ago.
I'm gonna schedule the second one for January.
Okay.
And then.
Around that time, yes.
It's good for you guys.
We can do a Monday in January and good with it, so.
Or if you wanted to wait later, I mean, it's, it's really completely up to you guys, cause you'll stop.
What day were you planning?
Mondays.
A Monday in January?
How is that for you, PJ?
January ninth.
We can do the ninth. If something comes up, by the next meeting, we'll have to adjust, I guess.
Right. It's good for you.
Okay.
So. Not yet, we'll get the date first.
Six thirty work for everybody?
Six thirty works fine. Six thirty.
Perfect, alright.
That's perfect. Do we need to vote on that? So, make a motion for, God, I lost the date already. January, January ninth, uh.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three at six.
Thirty P M.
Six thirty P M.
Yeah.
Yep.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, student trip request for the twenty twenty-three Clear Lake trip. Need a motion.
Are we doing one at a time?
We can do one at a time. Uh, I think, I think we can do them all together.
I make a motion to approve the student trip request, the twenty twenty-three Clear Lake trip as well as the drama trip.
Second.
What is the drama trip? Super fun.
They are. Are you still on the other side?
Awesome, okay.
So we had a motion, we had a second, we have an all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Vote for Carrie. Uh, personnel, uh, termination, Kaylee Barner, custodian, Gwyn Middle High School, effective date of termination, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. I'll make the motion to approve the employee termination.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, resignation, Zachary Borat, custodian, Gwyn Middle High School, effective date of resignation, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Ally Paulson, parapro, K I Sawyer Elementary, effective date of resignation, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and Alexandra Kessner. Parapro at Gilbert Elementary School, effective date of resignation, November twenty-second. I will make the motion to accept the resignations. See a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Employment will be individuals, uh, Sandy Davis, noon hour supervisor, K I Sawyer Elementary School, effective date of hire, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. I'll make the motion to. Uh, consider the employment of that, of Sandy Davis.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Gabrielle Sharp, custodian, Gwyn Middle High School, effective date of hire, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. I'll make the motion to consider the employment. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None heard. Carrie Borman, parapro, K I Sawyer Elementary, effective date of hire, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Make the motion to consider the employment. See a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aaron Sorenson, assistant varsity girls' basketball coach, Gwyn Middle High School, effective date of hire, first day of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three winter sports season. I'll make the motion to consider.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None heard. Uh, Zachary Borat, district student instructional and auxiliary tech support, effective date of hire, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, I'll make the motion to consider.
Oh, second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Gifts and donations, um, girls ride only, period, feminine hygiene products donated to Gilbert Elementary School. K I Sawyer Elementary School, Gwyn Middle High School. Christopher Langlois, hot dog buns donated to K I Sawyer Elementary Schools Family Night. And individual bags of Halloween candy donated for each student and staff member at K I Sawyer Elementary School. T J Derwin, Lego robotics competition table donated to Gilbert Elementary School. Kyle Storm, Insurance Agency, a two hundred dollar grant for classroom supplies. Donated to Monique Moore's classroom at Gilbert Elementary School. Jamie Glockner, Honor Credit Union, two hundred dollar grants for Amanda Hornback and Olivia Johnson's classrooms. Mark Gardaby, used tuba and trombone, an estimated value of twenty-five hundred dollars donated to the music department at Gwyn Middle High School. And donors choose various donations as listed below. Robo Towners Robotics valued at a hundred and eighty-seven dollars twenty-nine cents for the G M S robotics team. Need a motion to accept the listed gifts and donations. I'll make a motion with gratitude to accept the gifts and donations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. So move to. We have our public comment, uh, just wanna make the reminder that, um, it's, it is five minutes. Who's gonna keep time?
I'll take time.
Do you have a, can you give them a two-minute warning and a one-minute warning, maybe?
Sure, try.
If you're, if you could just look to, look to her for time, so when you see the two-minute warning, then you can, you know that you. Have finished off your comment. Just some of the rules with it, that, um. You can't, you can't be calling out people directly, um, you can make your comments, but, um, it has to be to the board as a whole. Sky?
Alright, um, good evening. I stand before you tonight as a GACS alumni, a former GACS teacher, a community member, a home, homeowner and taxpayer, and a very concerned parent. Last month, I sat here for nearly four hours watching as twenty-nine people spoke during public comment. Current and former students spoke about their personal stories in the Gwyn schools, teachers spoke about their personal experience. Mothers stood at this podium with tears in their eyes and hurt in their voice. A neuroscientist from N M U, professors with PhDs, psychologists and N M U students. You received letters ahead of October's board meeting from the A C L U, N M U, as well as concerned parents, all of which fell on deaf ears. Here is a direct quote from one of our board members during the board member comments in October. I would like to hear from you guys, I would like to try and understand what we can do to help make it better for you guys. Bullying is not acceptable, no way, but I think you guys want to fix it today, but nobody really has the solution. And if so, if somebody has a solution to help us make it, help us out and make it better. Another one said, how do we accomplish making everyone accepted? I challenge you, I challenge each of you to come together, work together and to produce positive suggestions that are for all children in this school. How are we going to get them to respect each other? What do you think we were doing for the last three hours during public comment in October? Do you see how this is frustrating for members of our community? You ask us to show up, to speak up if we're concerned, and when we do, you reject the solutions. The reason you are claiming the flags are banned is because they can be interpreted as political. We supplied you with photos from all political parties supporting the LGBTQ community. You cannot stand behind this as your reason any longer. However, if you want to continue claiming this as your reason why, I would also like you to consider some other flags and posters I've seen this month hanging around our schools. The first one I saw was as I went to the bathroom at the last board meeting, it was a student art project with a photo of a high school teacher in our building with the words. Natural rights come from God, not government. I also saw a Packer flag hung in one of the elementary classrooms. If we're gonna pick and choose which flags are allowed on our school walls and which flags aren't, then I'd like the Packer flag to be removed. We are Lions fans in my home, my son comes from, comes from school already outnumbered by kids in Packer jerseys. He feels bad for being a Lions fan, I know this sounds so petty, but this is what you're doing with the pride flag. I'm also concerned about religious flyers being sent home to our students, which has happened in the elementary schools. The practice of distributing religious flyers by public schools is objectionable on many different grounds. First, school-sponsored distributions of religious materials carry out the stamp of official endorsement. Certainly, small children are apt to confuse official school notices with religious propaganda. Second, each, or second, even if the school disassociates itself from the religious activity through a disclaimer. The distribution of literature for religious organizations and activities requires the time and resources of paid school personnel. Policies that allow these third parties to distribute their literature forces teachers of diverse views and beliefs to distribute religious promotional materials. Clearly, the sort of entanglement between religion and government officials is unseemingly inappropriate. I would like to request the school district amend to take home, amend the take-home flyer policy, if you have one at all. To restrict the service to school-sponsored or cosponsored events only. On another note, ironically, another board member in favor of banning pride flags can be quoted from last month's meeting as saying. I think everybody needs to do a better job at being kinder to each other, like the flag is supposed to represent. Be kind, be loving. Why would the collective board choose to remove a flag that is seen as a flag that represents kindness? Even admitted by a board member opposing the flag. The same board member goes on to say, I used to tell the student who got bullied, that would come in and complain, so-and-so was bothering me. Well, then why are you over there with them? Well, because I thought you, they could be my friend. I said, how many times are you going to understand? Don't waste your time with them, stay with people that are going to be your friend forever, know what true friendship is. This doesn't sound like teaching kindness, this sounds like teaching kids to ignore being bullied, to just deal with it. It also does not hold the bullies accountable at all. It completely enables them to continue bullying when it goes unchecked by the adults in the building. I've heard from a few community members that there has recently been some internal conflict regarding the D E I committee. It's been stated that some board members feel the committee is only there to serve the members of the LGBTQ community. It's my understanding that the D E I stands for diversity, equity and inclusion and is representative of all minority groups and students. If possible, I would like the board to clarify what the D E I committee stands for, so there is no room for confusion. How are we supposed to put our faith and trust in a board that can't even communicate something as simple as understanding the acronym D E I? And what its committee goals are? And how can we trust you that you are able to communicate and work together on big issues when it comes to our district? The longer our school district goes without resisting, I'm almost done.
Well, no, that was your five minutes. Thank you. We have other people.
Thank you for your time and I hope you make the right choice, if for no other reason than the future of our district, because kids are going to be starting to be pulled from our schools. Including mine.
Tanner? Leslie wanted Gail to go first, before you.
I think it doesn't matter to us, so thank you for asking, though. My name is Tammy Wills, I have a student here in the district, um, this is my third board meeting that I have spoken, I'm speaking at. Um, after the last board meeting, I was horrified to learn that the teacher who made the transphobic public comments is a member of the D E I committee. Um, actions like hers, in my opinion, endanger the school's federal funding by violating Title X requirements. If the school is inclusive as the board professes, they should pass policy to make it a requirement of its staff to use appropriate pronouns for all students and staff. If staff do not want to comply, perhaps a secular rather than public school setting would be more appropriate for them. Religion has no place in schools and a student who is taught to hate under the guise of religion and tells transphobic and homophobic beliefs is still a bully. I question the sincerity of the board when you profess to not have been aware of the bullying here in Gwyn. Yet three of our seven board members have students who attend schools and other districts. Why is this? Additionally, board members have yet to respond to a number of emails despite their claims of willingness to talk or engage. The board members who were competent at the last meeting that they are unbiased talked policy, while the rest of you just touted how good you are. If you all aren't willing to take a good look at yourselves and admit your biases, then the school as a whole will not move forward. Until it does, I will continue to call you out on your transphobic and homophobic words and actions. I think the school needs to crack down on bullying across the board and take students' complaints seriously, even when there are no witnesses. I would encourage the board to have anonymous surveys regarding school climate or bullying available. With drop boxes at the next round of parent-teacher conferences. I think you'd find an overwhelming number of parents who would support a true zero tolerance to bullying that would benefit all students. I believe the board is trying to cover up, in my opinion, the discriminatory no vote taken for the employment of Casey Modus as a parapro. I would ask that your September meeting minutes be amended to include this vote, which can be seen on the YouTube video of the meeting. But has been conveniently omitted from the minutes posted on your website. I would like to encourage the board, and I'm gonna use a name here, but this is a positive comment, so I. I would like to encourage the board, and I'm going to use a name here, but this is a positive comment, so I hope you will allow me to do it, uh, to vote in Ashley Genema as the next president. I don't think we need another year of don't ask, don't tell. Ashley generated the most votes by far of any candidate. She seems to be the middle ground where hopefully we can find some kind of compromise. To end on a positive note, the DEI committee is doing some things right. Names have been changed in power schooling on student IDs. A mural location has been narrowed down to two choices. The Gender Sexuality Alliance Student Club is just starting December first, and I'd like to thank Angie Mashaw and Benjamin Platt for stepping up as advisors. The Rainbow Library from the Gay Lesbian and Straight Education Network is available for middle and high school students. I would encourage kids to check them out. My son has designed posters that will soon be available for teachers to hang in their classrooms, which I'm glad to see is the wall seemed pretty bare during parent-teacher conferences. The showcase by Dan Kilpala's room will be used to promote, um, the DEI committee with the student leader groups, um, and will have an LGBTQ theme. The DEI-sponsored speaker tomorrow night, Jennifer Christensen, a Gwyn alumni, is a proud parent to a transgender child. I have been told that a request to inform all staff, kitchen staff, custodians, board members, parapros, bus drivers and teachers, was denied by the superintendent. I'd like to know why. Wouldn't you want as many people from the school district to attend as possible? Again, these actions seem to indicate bias and discrimination. I hope that we can show him that love will overcome hate, and that from one mother of a transgender child to another, I look forward to what she has to say and how we can make our school more LGBTQ friendly.
Gail?
Can you hear me? Hello. As a reminder, I am Gail McCabe. I spoke at the last board meeting. I am a member of the Student Leadership Ship Committee, and my pronouns are he/him. I am here because of an incident at last board meet, at the last, at the last board meeting. You chose to take the side of neutrality, but in doing so, have chosen sides. I am not here to, to, to fully criticize the whole board, but someone, a member of staff who was present at the time of the meeting, voting, and who shall remain nameless. It was your word, in your word alone, that vetoed the flags going up, and I see this as nothing but insulting and insensitive. In the first half of 2021 alone, it was reported that one out of every four LGBTQ plus youth attempted suicide, often because of bullying by their peers. Clearly, me listing up these, these statistics means nothing to you, so I'll put it into perspective of, of our community. Think about all of the LGBTQ plus students in our school, and what if one of, of every four of them were successful in ending their lives? Think about the fresh graveside flowers, empty desks and beds, and the great mourning in the community, because whether you know it or not, every single one of us would know someone who died because of suicide. And the, and, and the thing is, these hypothetical deaths could be prevented. If you don't want this to become a reality, think carefully about the choices you make and how those affect the young lives in this community. Last time, we posed the looming sta- statistics of premature deaths at the hands of bullying and discrimination in our school, and all you did was squirm in your chair. And yet vetoed, denied, waved off, flags remained down, and I remain being called a fag in the hallway. How many more times am I going to be barked at in the hallways, called a faggot, tranny, dyke, abomination, sin, disgusting, queer, deceiving, because I am trying to find a way to be happier in my own skin and that Jesus does not love me just because of, of who I love, before something is done? Last board meeting, three, only three or four people spoke out against our cause. The we, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few, except on our community and, and on your board. And the majority needs the flags to go back up. The flags coming down in the first place was a sign that it is perfectly fine to harri, to harass, beat and bully LGBTQ plus students, addressing another thing you said against us. You do not need to fly a flag to be an ally, however, it is a way to show that, that you are an ally and that students can, can feel safe without immediately being open about themselves. And when it was said that calling trans kids like myself by our, by our preferred names and pronouns, it is against your religion, I would like to inform you that I could be shot and bleeding out against, and a doctor could refuse to save my life because I myself am against their religion. Being called the wrong name and pronouns may not be bullets, but they sure feel like it. It can be the lifeline that stops someone from like, someone like me from ending at all by simply affirming who I am and who I always have been. Speaking of bullets, I would like to note that minority students, including LGBTQ plus students, are more likely to be targeted by a school shooter. You may think this is not relevant, however, knowing that we had two school shooting threats last year, one last week, and knowing that, that I could walk into school, or, um, that someone could walk into the school with the intent of driving a bullet through my chest just because of their hate and unwillingness to accept my identity is deeply unsettling. Adding, adding on to this, last weekend, a gay bar was shot up, leaving five dead and twenty-five injured. Is it really in the name of Jesus Christ that I should bleed out by bullet or by razor blade? Is this really how you want it to be? I will say it again, hate has no place in our school. Blaming victims of systematic oppression and abuse has, has no place in our school. You do not vote against me, but I wrote, but I will repeat myself in saying that bystanders who do not interfere with the abuse of minorities are always lumped in with the aggressors and oppressors. Do something if you do not want to be associated with the people who call me a fag in the hallway, otherwise history will be forced to deem you one and the same. To add insult to injury, the, the diversity wall that you've been bragging about for months, of which no progress or very little progress has been made, was recently re-revended as the All Students Matter Wall. This was a slap in the face. Whereas, I am not saying that all students don't matter. I'm saying that we want equal representation, and since you've taken down our flags, we've had none, none. I had to print out and ha, and hand out posters because the school was doing nothing to help. You are neglecting our, our cry for help by turning the diversity wall into an All Students Matter Wall. You are erasing the diversity of marginalized groups, and, and we want to be heard, not lumped, lumped in, not elevated, but equal. The problem with our school is the lack of diversity and representing said diversity. Making us share a mural with people who call us fags, slurs against disabled people and racial slurs in the hallway is frankly insulted. Although I will give my thanks to Ms. Mashaw for working on getting a pride slash diversity display case, this is merely a band-aid over a bullet wound and distracting us from a larger problem. I was told that being LGBTQ plus is a new thing invented to, to turn against God, and this in itself does no justice to centuries of torment and systematic abuse. I was told that the, um, so Kai?
Kai's going to finish for you.
Yep, Kai, here, I'll highlight where, but, um, um, here, I'm gonna highlight real quick. Yeah, so down from there.
I was also told that the American flag does not stand for people like myself, so I cannot feel any safety or kinship in a country that I was born in. And still, we are written out of history books as friends instead of lovers. We have always been here and will continue to be here, but denying us a place at the table that you are allowing us to be abused, or by denying us a place at the table, you are allowing us to be abused. By denying us our flags, history and a safe space in our community, you are giving us a death sentence. Mu, we must be loud and we must continue to fight for those who came before us that could not fight for, sorry. We must be loud and we must continue fighting for those who came before us that could not. We must speak our truth and share our history. By denying us this privilege, you are taking the power from the people. We must be loud for those who were lynched in the streets, beaten, murdered, bombed, assassinated and assaulted because of their identities. We must continue to raise our voices for those who had them snuffed out. If you continue with neutrality and keeping the flags down, you are responsible for us being called slurs. You are enabling those calling us slurs. You are allowing us to be beaten, murdered, assaulted and bruised. You are standing by while students' lives are threatened, including my own. You are becoming the oppressors. I would go as far as to say that you already are.
Latasha? Latasha?
So, I just wanted to kind of be a liaison tonight for the Episcopalian Archdiocese of Marquette. Um, they had some really nice letters of support for our community, um, and I just wanted to share a few of those with everyone. Because there's a lot of separation right now, and we're talking about politics, and I don't think we're talking about the same things. I don't think we're talking about the right things. And so I want to show that, that we can have opposing differences and still be on the same team for these kids. And so I would like to share just a few of these if that's right with you. Um, so this one is from a friend from Marquette, the Episcopal Archdiocese. We stand with you, BU, you are so loved. This one says, "I wanted to remind each of you of your strength, light and power. Please hang in there. We support you." This one says, "You are loved, you are beautiful, just the way God made you. Keep it up. You're already such a light, a bright light." There's lots of them. They're very sweet, and, um, I just wanted to kind of bridge the gap here. Says, "God loves you, no exceptions. You are enough and have much to offer to this world because you are you." So I think we're fighting kind of a, an opposing battle here, and I don't think we're going to get very far if we can't come together and support unitedly, one way or the other, support the kids, regardless of minority status, regardless of their sexual orientation. This is a perfect example to me of how we can work together and we can have opposing differences, but still be supportive of our kids no matter what that looks like and what shape, size, orientation that comes in. And I think that I, I thank and appreciate very much the Episcopal Archdiocese for providing these and doing this for our community and reaching out to extend a helping hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask for the spelling in the last?
M-H-A-N.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. First of all, we're the young man. Uh, God does love you no matter what. You're created just the way you're supposed to be, okay? And as far as the flag goes, nowadays, all that is more, is a more of a political sign, uh, flag. Uh, it just creates hatred and everything else. I know you understand you're trying to make yourself out there and everybody else, I understand that, it's great. You know, but do that by loving each other. Don't say, "I am special. I can do what I want." And as far as personal pronouns, that is ridiculous. I'm sorry, you know, I love you.
You have to address the board, sir.
Oh, Steve, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Boy, uh, you're right. Okay. Uh, anyways, when someone tells me that I have to go according to their personal pronouns, they're calling me an idiot because I don't know the difference between a male and a female. When you go to school, the schools are facts. You have biology. You know, you don't just say, "I'll be who I want this time. The next time you talk to me, I might be something di- different." For centuries, it's always been male and female. Personal pronouns has no place in, in school especially. You're confusing the kids. The young kids don't know if they're coming or going. This guy's a lady, this guy's a man, or this, you know, this, it doesn't make a bit of sense. You're supposed to teach school and you're supposed to take, teach them, you know, to love each other, of course. But biology is biology. No matter what they do to the outside, they can never change the blood, the X and Y chromosomes. They are loved and they should always be loved. God loves them. No matter what they do, they always, he's always loved them. But the flag nowadays is more hatred. They want to do love, but it's more of a political thing right now, and I don't agree that it should be up. No one else could bring in a Confederate flag. That would be, that would be so terrible if someone brought a Confederate, Confederate flag, but they can fly that flag. And, and it's just too political right now for that stuff. And personal pronouns has no place at all, especially in schools. Thank you.
Well, remember comments?
I went first last time.
Go first again this time.
Okay.
Okay. So, Latasha? Right on. I don't know why it has to be us them. We're all we. God loves us all. If you believe in God, okay, or whatever you believe, okay? I believe in God. Some people don't, and that's okay. I'm not saying what you should do. I'm not walking in your shoes. I also feel that for a lot of kids, transgender is a real thing. What I don't agree with, based on brain research, and anybody, I have a copy if anybody wants it. A brain isn't ready at twelve to start getting hormone shots. It's not ready at fifteen to have breasts removed or penises removed. You know? I'm not saying don't do it. And I'm not saying for parents to just ignore it. I think they have to be supportive. They're their children. But research doesn't lie. Research that has been replicated over and over and over again. The reasoning center is the last thing to develop. There's a reason kids can't drive. There's a reason you gotta wait till you're eighteen to drink, to vote, to do a lot of other things. Having a medical procedure done that, I, I, I just, I can't even find the right word for it, when the person you're doing it to is not old enough to fully understand what that means. And, and, and I've read a lot all week long about this. I've read the pros, the cons, the brain research, the Christian side of it. I've watched videos on kids that have had it done and were great. I know somebody who did, and it was great. But I also saw a lot of stories where it was really sad. Nobody gave the parents the information. And there's lawsuits out there because they weren't given the information. And the only reason I bring this up is for the information. I'm not saying to do it. I'm not saying not to do it. I'm saying, read the research. Please. Bullying. Bullying is going on everywhere. Our world is out of control. It isn't just Gwyn. And if you think it is, then you probably have your head buried in the sand, and I'm not going to feel bad about saying that. But there's also three things about bullying. One, you gotta get them to report it. Two, if they do report it, I'm sorry, you cannot just take one child's word over another. Now, cases where it's repeatedly brought to the attention, well, yeah, that's a different story. The last thing is, if it's proven it's bullying, parents get upset because we can't tell you anything else about the other child or what their discipline was. Therefore, you feel nothing has been done. But you know, likewise for your children. We can't go and say anything about your children either. That's a violation of confidentiality that everybody has. The mural. I really want board approval for this mural and where it's going to go. Please. And religious flyers. If religious flyers were sent out, my granddaughters at Gilbert Island see a thing. So if somebody has a copy of it, I'd love to see it. The DEI committee is new. It is not all about LGBTQ. My understanding is we're moving on to the bullying against special ed students, which is a passion of mine. Right now, LGBTQ is a hot topic. You know, so why not take it first? Amen, take it first. But we're not, this is for all students. Diversity, equality, inclusion. And data. Everybody keeps throwing about how bullying is increased, yet nobody has any data. So please stop saying that. The only people we can get the data from are those that are taking it. And you know what? It's confidential. Behavior. I've said it to many people, um, many times. I want a universal behavior rubric for this district. I want us all on the same page, so when you're leaving one school and you go to another, you've got a pretty even flow. Behavior is right out of control in this district, and I'm going to say that in front of God and everybody. I'm working in this library on Thursdays. I can't bring kids in here with the behavior that's going on in here. So I'm wondering if I should just give it up. Not happy, and I'm not happy, and I don't understand why these kids aren't being swept out the door. I don't want to throw kids away. But if we can't get a school and a school to help those kids, then that's, we're left with no other choice. I don't want to keep setting bad examples for good kids. Curriculum. Where are we at with curriculum? Haven't heard a thing about it. I thought we were getting math books. Haven't heard a thing about that. And policy. Everybody needs Everybody needs to sit down and read the policy manual. I read it twice over this week. We need to follow it. And if we're not gonna follow it, we need to change it. And I do want to thank everybody who comes, because you know, unless there's a hot topic, we're lucky if there's six people in the audience. Encourage people to come. I think that's it. Was that enough?
It's your replica. It's your cover.
Okay, that's a lot.
You're good.
Thank you. Thanks.
I can't compare to that, I don't think. Great job on the audit, you guys. I applaud all the staff and administration, everybody, and board members, everybody for having a positive outcome on the audit. That makes me happy. It was brought up a little while ago. I don't remember who said it. Somebody out there about the DEI, what it actually stands for. You said one thing. I thought it was diversion, equity, and inclusion. Or, yes, I said, or diversity. So I guess that would be nice to know what it actually stands for.
Diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Okay. That's what I thought. You did, I think, but it's fine. I don't even know. I guess as long as I know what that stands for, that's good. And I agree with you definitely on the bullying. That's, it's an issue everywhere. We do gotta get that under control before we can get anything else under control, I think. And we gotta get back to the fundamental education and get these test scores back up to against average, anyway. And I'm excited to see what these results come in in January, so... That's all I've really got to say. You did?
I don't think I could say anything right now that wouldn't get me in a lot of trouble for being too over-emotional. I just, I cannot, I cannot... We're just taking the focus completely away from bringing understanding and empathy to our school community. And and everything else that, like, the audit is awesome. Like, we're doing well financially. PJ and Neil are keeping things going. Teachers are doing awesome. Parapros are in there. They're working their butts off with these students. You know, like, every single segment of our school is excelling. And, like, I know the numbers don't line up, but there's a lot of different factors that go into that, right? And yet, we're just completely divided and completely... I can't, I can't, I can't say anything right now because I'll call people out, and I don't want to do that. So just try to focus on how we're gonna bring the kids together and what's gonna be the best for our kids. And start with recognizing what's gonna help out the... what's gonna be the best ways to help our marginalized student populations, right? Because if you can't even recognize and understand and be empathetic towards them, then what are you doing? What are we doing? Why can't we do that? If we can show empathy and understanding for each other, and we can get that across to the kids, hopefully the kids pick that up. And then the bullying goes down. And then you have a real school community. And then you get a million kids at our football games because they're there for that. And then you get a million kids at our drama at the plays. You know, like, be be accepting. Be understanding. Be empathetic. And I'm not seeing much going on with us as a board right now or us as a school community right now with that. So despite all of our successes, we gotta, we gotta work on some stuff. I'm disappointed in, I'm disappointed in the direction that some of these are going. Like, we had great intentions. We had great intentions for the DEI committee. And I feel like part of it's getting sabotaged. Part of it is not moving fast enough. But if you move too fast, then you make mistakes. But if you go too slow, then it looks like you can do nothing, right? So it's just a process. And you need to, you need to see some grace, and you need to encourage empathy and compassion for each other. And just gotta, gotta start with that. That's it.
Sure. Sorry, everybody. I'm doing this off the fly, so if I screw up my words or don't talk right, go ahead and rip me again. I would like to say thank you, Tasha, because what you said up here is exactly what I've been trying to say all along. And what Chris always says is, we need to treat each other as human beings because we're all human beings. We all make mistakes. We all come from different backgrounds. And I just want to say that I did see you at this game, TJ, but... And I thought about this a long time. I was at a basketball game, a middle school basketball game. And Brandon, I have to talk to you about this too later. But I was at a middle school basketball game, and I sat through the whole thing. And wow, if any of you go, which I see a couple of you in here that have been at those games, you watch these kids, and they put on these uniforms, Chris, which I know you hate, but these Gwynn uniforms brought them all together. Those kids cheered each other on. They don't care if they're black. They don't care if they're white. They don't care if they're gay. They don't care if they're rich. They don't care if they're poor. They come from every background, and they cheered each other on, and they gave each other love. They don't even care, you know, they're Gwynn kids. They supported each other. And that's what I don't see here anymore. We don't support each other. We just rip each other down and tear each other apart. And I hope to God, we are not, we don't know a lot about... TJ's the only one that's been really invited to the DEI group. I don't know that, and I can only speak for myself. I have not been invited to the DEI group. I don't know what goes on in the DEI group. All I can hope and pray is that your DEI group has people from every walk of life, from every background, from every ethnic group, from every, from religions to nonreligious to whatever. We need to come together, and we need everyone's input. Not just a few. We need everyone's input. Because I'm telling you right now, if we don't start coming together, we're just ripping each other apart. And yeah, we will lose kids, and we will lose families, and we will lose a lot because we are a good community. We've always shown each other love. We've always shown each other compassion, and we've always shown each other respect. I don't know what's happened in the last few years. I don't know, but I don't recognize this community. It's not a community that I grew up. And I hope to God you guys each start giving respect to each other. All of you, every last one of you. I'm sick of all this. It tears me apart, and I'm sick of it. And that's all I have to say.
Girls, I found the shells today!
They're frozen.
There's your other one in there! Oh, I'm sure it was.